And with that, I have seven o'clock. Welcome to the Clayton City Council meeting on December 6, 2022. And with that, we'll call this meeting to order. Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Here.
Mayor Cloven?
I'm here as well. And that will close item number one. Is there no meeting protocol video required this evening? No, we're going to dispense with that. Excellent. Let's move on to item number two, which is the Pledge of Legions. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. And with that, we're going to move on to item numbers three, which is our consent calendar. Are there any items from the consent calendar that any of our council members would like to pull for discussion? I see Vice Mayor Tillman.
It is item number... 3E just has a small typo. That's all. Can you just tell us what the typerism will fix it?
Leave it hanging.
No suspense needed. It's on page 24. It is in the final paragraph above Jeff and Kim's names. And it reads that there are three positions, three candidates versus two. It's in there a couple times.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. And if there are no other questions from the council, we'll move this to public comment on this particular item, which is the consent calendar. And if you'd like to speak, you would have three minutes to do so on any item that is on the consent calendar. Are there any hands in the public? Seeing none. Janet, do we have any hands online?
Mayor Cloven, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Excellent. And we'll close public comment on item number three and bring it back to the council. And I entertain a motion with the... For it as amended, obviously.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Got a first by Vice Mayor Tillman, a second by Councilmember Wolf. Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Juan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Yes.
Mayor Cloven?
Yes. And with that, that passes five to nothing. And we'll move on to item number four, which is recognitions and representations. This is for information only. This is no action required because we have Human Rights Day on December 10th, and we've acknowledged that previously, so we will not acknowledge it again. So item number 4A is closed. And we'll move on to item number 4B, which is certificates of recognition for our public school students exemplifying do the right thing trait. And the character this month was respect for this month to October 2022. And I'm going to actually turn this over to Councilmember Wolf, who has done such an amazing job with this historically. Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I see Ms. Sanchez up there. Hi, Ms. Sanchez, how are you? We can't hear Ms. Sanchez.
I am doing well, thank you. How are you? Happy holidays.
I'm very well, thank you, thank you. So who do we have today for exemplifying respect for our do the right thing?
We have two students, and Jackson Ring and Kyle Hunt. So I don't know if they are in person or if they are on Zoom. And Heidi Brown is the other teacher. I'm going to be speaking for Katherine Erickson.
Oh, who's that?
There's Jackson.
Hello, Jackson, how you doing? What a good smile you have at this time of night. No homework, I assume.
And that's his little brother Ryder, right behind him.
I love that. That's Ryder Ring. I love that name, Ryder Ring. That's fantastic. Okay, tell us about Jackson.
Well, I know that I have plenty to say about Jackson, and respect is the utmost. But I know Ms. Brown was planning on coming on the Zoom. Is she in the panelist?
No? Okay, then Jackson, your mom can speak.
Oh, no, I can speak. This is...
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Go ahead.
So I was actually... We do very... We do... Sorry, I'm using an iPad, and I don't usually use an iPad. I apologize, Ring family and Clayton. So I just, you know, we... The two students that were selected this month, I know very well. And Jackson has been one of my students since I first came onto campus. And he is a student that no matter what time of day, no matter what the weather, he is always saying hello to me. And I can't say that about everybody to the principal. And he shows respect to everyone on our campus. He picks up garbage when he sees it. He's just a student that is always doing the right thing. And he's just... As a former teacher, I, you know, I could only be so lucky to have a class full of Jacksons, let alone even just having one. So, you know, he... My camera, I am really sorry if you're recording this.
You look fine.
Okay, good, because it doesn't look like that on my camera. So yeah, so Jackson, you are the epitome of respect. And it's so great to have you as a student. And I know that Ms. Brown would say the exact same thing. And we are so lucky to have you on our campus for another few years as well.
All right, let's have a nice hand for Jackson. Can you hear that? Thank you, Jackson, and Merry Christmas to you. And thanks a lot. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. And now, who else do we have?
We should have Kyle Hunt.
Let's see if Kyle is there. Otherwise, Jackson, you can have two awards. I don't see Kyle. Is Kyle in the room, Janet?
Yep. It's going to be Kelly Hunt. That's the mom.
Hi.
Your camera is still off, Kelly.
Wait a minute, I hear something. We don't see...
We got it. Sorry, we're not very technical over here either.
There we go. There we go.
Hey!
Hi, Kyle.
Hi. Hi, Kyle.
I apologize. Ms. Erickson is dealing with some sick kids right now, so in her own home. So I apologize, but she did send me what to write. So if it's okay with you guys liking to read it to you?
I understand you were dealing with some sick kids too last week, right?
I was, and myself.
Hopefully, everybody's better now.
So thankfully, my house is now healthy, and I sound normal.
You do.
For Kyle. And I would echo even what I said about Jackson, about Kyle. Kyle is an amazing young lady, and she is so set for middle school. She is full of respect for everyone that she comes in contact with. From Ms. Erickson, deciding which student to recognize for respect was a no-brainer for me. I didn't think it was too possible... I didn't think it was possible to sometimes be too respectful, but that's Kyle. Her kindness knows no bounds, and she is constantly putting others above herself. Fifth grade can be a time when students start to show a little attitude now and then, but not Kyle. Her respect for others is noticed and appreciated by the staff and students alike. Thank you, Kyle.
Hey, thank you, Kyle. Well, thank you both, and congratulations on your award for do the right thing, for respect. Want to thank Kyle, want to thank Jackson, want to thank Ryder, wherever he went to, and everybody's moms and everybody's teachers. Hey, Ms. Sanchez, I just want to say also, thank you so much for sending your second-grade chorus out to the tree lighting on Saturday. They did an outstanding job.
I heard it was a little wet.
Probably the best chorus that I've ever seen at that age. Fantastic. So, thank you very much. Give a nice hand to everybody. All right. And now, Mr. Fong, I see, has joined us from our middle school. Hi.
Good evening. I think we're waiting for one more student. Austin Kirkham should be out there somewhere.
Janet is shaking her head no. He has respectfully declined. Tell us about Lexi.
All right. So, yes. So Lexi is an incredibly respectful student. She greets everyone around her. She respects people for their differences. She follows all the school rules, as well as all of her teachers' classroom rules. On top of that, she's extremely considerate in caring of others. She works hard to complete all of her assignments. She puts a lot of effort into her work. She's a straight A student, and she's a great friend, and she serves as a role model for all of her schoolmates.
Wow, that's high praise. Fantastic. Congratulations, Lexi. And what grade are you in, Lexi?
I'm in seventh grade.
You're in seventh grade? So you have one more year there? Fantastic. You're very lucky, Mr. Fong, to have her for another year. So thank you very much. Congratulations, Lexi.
Thank you.
All right. And now, we have... Do we have Austin with us? We don't, but you can tell us about Austin, Mr. Fong.
All right. Well, I will say that Austin is also a very respectful student. He's kind to everyone around him, and he listens intently to staff and follows all of their directions. He's helpful, polite, and he works hard in class and is a good friend. Whenever he's assigned group work, he works positively with all of his peers. That was what his teacher gave me.
Thank you very much. A nice hand for Austin, too. Austin and Lexi. Austin and Lexi from our middle school. And Mr. Fong, thank you so much for the past couple of years working with me on do the right thing. We look forward to the continuation of the program. So thank you very much, and Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, everybody. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you. Bye.
Thank you. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wolf. It's very appropriate that you get a chance to close with that. You've been a tremendous partner in this program for the past couple of years and the relationships you developed with our principals. And the way you interact with our students has just been a joy to watch and a light part of our city council meetings. And I really appreciate that. So with that, we're going to close item number 4B and move it on to item number five, which is remarks by the outgoing city council members. And I only see one outgoing city council member sitting here, and that would be you, Councilmember Wolf. So with that, you have the mic.
I do, and I'm going to drop it in just a moment.
I'm looking forward to it.
All right. The long and winding road. Well, it certainly has been a journey. I've served Clayton on the Planning Commission and then here on the council, so about seven years or so, being the chairperson on the Planning Commission, and then got a chance to be mayor. This is something that just doesn't happen on your own. So I want to thank the people that got me here. And I want to really thank Raina. It's important, City Manager position, that she's done such a fantastic job. And we kind of came in together, especially with my virtual term as mayor, which was very unusual, to be on Zoom for an entire mayor term. Didn't get a chance to get out there and meet as many people as I wanted to when I was mayor. But you certainly helped me through that, and I really appreciate it. I know Clayton is going to miss you. After you leave, we're kind of started together, and now we're ending together, as it were. So thank you so much. Thanks to Mala, too, for always being straight up with me. I really appreciate it and all your guidance. And I also want to thank our small but mighty staff in the city. They are the backbone of the city. I have no idea how hard that they actually work. Our police department, our maintenance department, and all of our city staff, they work very, very hard, and I really, really appreciate all of their support. I want to thank every council member here and every council member and Planning Commissioner that I got a chance to work with over the past seven-plus years. It's been an interesting ride, and I hope that you will continue to support every council member, because these people work very hard. Everybody up here loves Clayton. And everybody coming into the council will work very hard because they love Clayton. Congratulations to Jeff on his reelection and to Kim on your election. They gave us the big table today to sit at. So with that, I also want to especially thank the citizens of Clayton for your support, the multitudes of letters and calls. And when I got a chance to meet you on the street, the support and overwhelming support, especially during my term as mayor, I really appreciate that. It has been a long and winding road, and now it comes to an end. And so I congratulate again. Kim, you can have the seat. So thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it, and I'll take this with me. I'm out. Thank you.
CW, it's been an incredible pleasure to know you of these years. And if I were to summarize it, I'd say you are the epitome of giving back to your community. You are the epitome of volunteerism. We pride ourselves in Clayton for that. We are pretty much an all-volunteer community for the most part in everything that we do. Three years in the Planning Commission, including one as the Planning Chair. I served with you on the Planning Commission. I remember some knock-down, drag-out meetings regarding the pearly housing conversations. Four years as a city council member, including one as mayor during the pandemic, which was a challenge. When we're meeting virtually and we're not seeing each other face-to-face, not eye, you handled that with grace and humor in a very challenging time. To be a longtime announcer for the City of Clayton for our Fourth of July parade, for you to be on CBCA volunteering in the capacity that you're doing, and actually to be elected as president for the coming term, this coming year, 2023, as a member and mayor of the city council, you pretty much piloted our do the right thing program for the last two years and really developed those relationships with our principal, both of our middle school and elementary school. Those relationships have translated into just amazing things as we see the growth in our children in the do the right thing traits which we espouse to as a city. As a council member, you were vice chair of the East Contra Costa County Nature Conservancy. And this year, you guys took great efforts to get Roddy Ranch preserved for generations in the future. And generally, you're an all-around great guy, positive outlook, optimistic as heck and funny. And we needed that levity at many times during the past couple of years. So thank you. Thank you. We'll miss you as a colleague, as a council member and as a leader. But you won't be too far away as you take CBCA to new heights in the future. And I hope that at a future meeting, the leaders of our council will actually do what I should have done tonight and put together proclamation and actually given you the key to the city and given you your day, which you deserve. So thank you.
Stop moving. You don't get to go far yet. Yeah, Peter said a lot. And I'm not going to repeat all the things that he said, but I will speak from the heart and say thank you for welcoming me to the committee... I mean, the council, rather. I didn't know you when you ran, which is why I cast my vote for Jeff and Brian. And, well, among other things. But you grew on me. I know that a lot of people in town might not like your quirky ways, but I love them. So thank you for being you. It was definitely an easy decision for me to nominate you as mayor when I did in 2020. And I thank you for taking the helm and carrying us through... 2021, rather, and carrying us through that year. It was very important because we had a lot of issues that we were dealing with. And I know that you were out there and about in the region, representing us and representing us well. And for that, I thank you. I think it was very important for people to know that we were still here, given that Julie had just retired, and that we were still important in this region. And we've tried to continue that as well. So thank you for helping me with the committees that we've served on from CBCA, out in the community with the Clayton Pride and the Clayton Speaks. All of those important endeavors that you and I have shared have meant a lot. So I know where to find you. You're not going far, and I thank you for your service.
Are there any other members of the community that would like to speak? I believe we have one coming up. Thank you. When you get to the podium, there's a button. You can push it, and the microphone will turn on.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alexia Lopez, and I am one of Senator Glazer's district representatives. Some of you may have worked with me in the past. I just want to say thank you for the work that you have done over this last year. I know it has been difficult. As you very eloquently said, Vice Mayor, coming out of COVID, I know it has been difficult. So I just want to kind of start off and just say thank you. And I know that the constituents in this community are also extremely thankful for all of the work that you have done. And Senator Glazer also especially is very grateful as you guys are all kind of working hands-on within our community. I just want to give a special shout-out and congratulations to you, Councilmember Wolf, for the amazing run that you have had on council over these last few years. I know that throughout my time with Senator Glazer, you have been an incredible resource for our office. And the senator just thanks you from the bottom of his heart for everything that you have done for this community. I know that you are going to continue to be a very strong force. Even though you will not be serving anymore, you will still, I'm sure in some capacity, be doing great things for this community. So on behalf of the California State Senate, I actually have a Senate resolution for you. The Senate resolution will officially be a part of California state history for the work that you have done on council. So this is for you. There we go. Right at the top, right? And then I also just want to congratulate Mayor Cloven for his time on council. You have done some incredible things for this community as well. So on behalf of the senator, I also have a certificate of recognition for you for your year as mayor. And we can't wait to see what you continue to do for this community, so.
Thank you.
And then, on a personal note, happy holidays. I hope all of you have a very restful time with your families. And hopefully, you know, going into this next year, you guys will continue to be a strong force. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And please thank the senator, too. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, CW. Really appreciate it. And with that, we get to close item number five. And now is the time we get to move on to item number six. And item number six is where we're going to administer the Oath of Office to our newly-elected council members. Councilmember Kim Trupiano, thank you, and congratulations on your campaign and for being elected. And our re-elected council member, Jeff Juan, congratulations to you, too. So what the list will do is the two of you will stand up, and our city clerk, Janet, will give you the oath of office. And after the oath is administered, we're going to take a 15-minute break and allow you to mingle with your family and with your supporters and have, I guess now is the time for cupcakes and coffee. And we'll get back together in about 15 minutes afterwards. Well, I think it's a coffee in the back. I think that's what it is. But anyways, so we're going to go ahead and do that now. So Kim and Jeff, if you can come to the center, and Janet will give you the oath of office.
Okay, if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye.
I, Kim Trupiano. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And bear true allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
True allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. And that I will well and faithfully. Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. And you both can sign your certificates. Okay. Okay.
Greetings, everybody. I'm going to bring this meeting back to order. Greetings, everybody. Let's bring this meeting back to order. And Kim, you get to sit at the table.
I don't need a cushion, do I? Yes, I need to use that.
And congratulations again to Jeff and Kim. And we come back to our regularly-scheduled meeting. We're going to go on to item number seven, which is our annual reorganization of Clayton City Council. Did my mic just go on? It just sounds like it. So the first item is, well, I'll explain what we're doing. And essentially, I'm going to open up the floor to our councilmembers to nominate a person for the position of mayor. And then I will ask for any additional nominations that may come to the table. The first person who is nominated is when we will vote on first. There doesn't need to be a second. And that's kind of the procedure. It's pretty straightforward, as was presented to us in our agenda. Before we go on to that, I want to ask if there are any councilmembers here who have any questions about the procedure itself. They can ask of our city manager or our city attorney. Seeing no questions from council regarding what's coming in this procedure, most items we have on the agenda have a public comment, period. And this item should be no different. So at this point, I'm going to open items number seven A and B, which is the election of the city council, mayor for the city council and vice mayor of the city council, to public comment on this item. If you would like to speak, you get a chance to come to the mic, and you have three minutes to talk on this item if you desire. So I'm going to open it at this point, as I've done all year long. Please keep your comments kind and respectful. We are all here doing our best to serve a city in the way we know. We will sometimes disagree. That's a good thing. We have differences of opinion. But we all, like Councilmember Wolf said, love Clayton in our own way. So if there is anybody in the community who is here who would like to speak on the annual reorganization, before we bring it back to the council to do so, you're welcome to come to the mic at this time. There's a button on the mic right there, and you can push it, and you can, in three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Dane Horton, and I have to tell you, I do appreciate the city council. Jeff Wan, I will tell you, has been in very good communication with us and the public as far as what's going on and keeping us updated on things that are going on in the city, as well as upcoming events. And so, just in pointing that out, I think he would make an excellent mayor. I know I'm not in a position to nominate anybody, but I certainly appreciate all of his energy and efforts in the city council these last four years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dane. Any other comments from the audience here? Any other comments in our virtual audience? Janet?
Mayor Cloven, I have one hand raised. Rosie, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak. Mayor Cloven, it appears that Rosie has lowered her hand, and I don't think she's going to be speaking on this item. So we can say there's no other hands raised on this item.
Excellent. And not seeing any hands in our audience here as well, I will close public comment on items number seven A and B and bring it back to the council. And with that, I will open up it to nominations for mayor.
I nominate Jeff Wan for mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Diaz. Are there any other nominations for mayor at this time? Seeing none, I will personally nominate Vice Mayor Tillman for the position of mayor. I will tell you that my experience of her being in our community and representing Clayton so well as she did outside of our community as well, has been an inspiration. She's backed me up when I needed to be backed up publicly, and she will make an amazing leader for our city. Are there any other nominations? With that, nominations are closed. And since Councilmember Diaz nominated Councilmember Wolf, I mean Wan...
I'm going to bring this meeting back to order. Greetings, everybody. Let's bring this meeting back to order. And Kim, you get to sit at the table.
I don't need a cushion, do I?
There she goes. Excellent, welcome back. And congratulations again to Jeff and Kim. And we come back to our regularly scheduled meeting. We're going to go on to item number seven, which is our annual reorganization of Clayton City Council. Did my mic just go on? It just sounds like it. So the first item is, well, I'll explain what we're doing. And essentially, I'm going to open up the floor to our council members to nominate a person for the position of mayor. And then I will ask for any additional nominations that may come to the table. The first person who is nominated is when we will vote on first. There doesn't need to be a second. And that's kind of the procedure. It's pretty straightforward as was presented to us in our agenda. Before we go on to that, I want to ask if there are any council members here who have any questions about the procedure itself. They can ask of our city manager or our city attorney. Seeing no questions from council regarding what's coming in this procedure, most items we have on the agenda have a public comment period. And this item should be no different. So at this point, I'm going to open items number seven A and B, which is election of the city council, mayor for the city council and vice mayor of the city council, to public comment on this item. If you would like to speak, you get a chance to come to the mic. And you have three minutes to talk on this item if you desire. So I'm going to open it at this point, as I've done all year long. Please keep your comments kind and respectful. We are all here doing our best to serve a city in the way we know. We will sometimes disagree. That's a good thing. We have differences of opinion, but we all, like Councilmember Wolf said, love Clayton in our own way. So if there is anybody in the community who is here who would like to speak on the annual reorganization, before we bring it back to the council to do so, you're welcome to come to the mic at this time. Excellent. There's a button on the mic right there, and you can push it. And you can, in three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Dane Horton. And I have to tell you, I do appreciate the city council. Jeff Wan, I will tell you, has been in very good communication with us and the public as far as what's going on and keeping us updated on things that are going on in the city as well as upcoming events. And so just in pointing that out, I think he would make an excellent mayor. I know I'm not in a position to nominate anybody, but I certainly appreciate all of his energy and efforts in the city council these last four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dane. Any other comments from the audience here? Any other comments in our virtual audience, Janet?
Mayor Cloven, I have one hand raised. Rosie, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak. Mayor Cloven, it appears that Rosie has lowered her hand, and I don't think she's going to be speaking on this item. So we can say there's no items, or I'm sorry, no other hands raised on this item.
Excellent. And not seeing any hands in our audience here as well, I will close public comment on items number seven A and B and bring it back to the council. And with that, I will open up it to nominations for mayor.
I nominate Jeff Wan for mayor.
Thank you, council member Diaz. Are there any other nominations for mayor at this time? Seeing none, I will personally nominate Vice Mayor Tillman for the position of mayor. I will tell you that my experience of her being in our community and representing Clayton so well as she did outside of our community as well has been an inspiration. She's backed me up when I needed to be backed up publicly, and she will make an amazing leader for our city. Are there any other nominations? With that, nominations are closed. And since Councilmember Diaz nominated Councilmember Wolf, I mean Wan first, we will go to a roll call vote on Councilmember Wan to become mayor. Janet, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trupiano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tillman?
Abstain.
Mayor Cloven?
And my answer is no. But I congratulate Councilmember
Yes, congratulations.
Wan for now being Mayor Wan. And with that, I will change seat to you.
Well, thank you for that. Protocols, we just continue on with the agenda. So the next item on the agenda is seven B, election of a vice mayor. This follows the same protocol as Councilmember Cloven indicated. So I will open up the floor for nominations for vice mayor. Is there any nominations for vice mayor?
I nominate Councilmember Diaz.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for vice mayor? Okay. Do we, I don't know if we even need to vote, but we can vote. Janet, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Trupiano?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cloven?
No.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
And Mayor Wan?
Aye. And with that, congratulations, Vice Mayor Diaz. So item seven C is recognitions and remarks by new mayor and council members. So if anyone would like to make any remarks, yeah, this is now the time.
I'd like to just make a few remarks. And if my family is still awake on the East Coast, they're on Zoom, I want to thank them for all their love and support. And if you're not still up, I'll send you a copy of the meeting tomorrow. I want to thank also everybody who helped me get here. I cannot thank you enough for all your moral support, for your physical support, for your words of encouragement, for your contributions. I mean, it really means the world to me. And you worked hard to get me here, and now I'm going to work hard for you. And I especially want to thank my husband, who, when I asked him how he felt about me running for office, he said, "I feel like everything you've been doing in your life is leading up to this moment, so go for it." And I'm with you 110%. So thank you, honey. I love you.
Any other council members would like to make any comments at this time? All right. Well, you know, first and foremost, like Kim, you know, I want to thank my wife and family. For a largely volunteer position, I am acutely aware that this role is impossible to do without their support and often at times their grace. I also want to thank Mr. Miller and Ms. Billiter for running. We may disagree from time to time on matters of policy, but healthy debate and discussion is part of the process. Anyone who decides to put themselves out there for public office is to be commended on their willingness to step up and serve. So thank you to them. And thank you to Kim. I look forward to working together along with the rest of the council over the next four years. You know, it's clear that the city faces challenges ahead. From staffing to budgets, community relations, we as a council and a community will need to come together in various ways to address these head-on. You know, I'm grateful that the residents of Clayton chose me again to represent them here on the council. And over the last four years, I've spoken to so many people. And what I get consistently is that they appreciate the transparency and clear communication. You know, I will continue to update residents as best I can in the years ahead, and that starts right now. Certainly, as a city, we need to maintain the services that make Clayton a wonderful place to live. But on top of that, my top three priorities will be, will reflect the challenges that we face. We need to address our staffing vacancies. That is number one. Our city manager will be leaving us soon, not that soon, but soon. And, you know, our finance director position remains vacant. Nothing can be accomplished if we do not have a sufficient level of staff. So that will be the top priority. We need, you know, we need to address our budget shortfalls. Deficit spending is not sound public policy. And while it may at times be necessary, we need to address our structural issues. First, by examining our expenses and cost structure, then by looking at our fee schedules and any other non-tax revenue options. This will take a bit of time. If we did not get here overnight, we will not address it overnight. But it is work that we need to be doing. The last item may be the hardest one, but I think it is important all the same. I want to find a way to reduce the polarization and heated rhetoric that has served to crowd out reasonable discourse. In our small town, it's not healthy for passions to overwhelm reason. And I say this may be the hardest one because when the loudest voices dominate the dialogue, it creates a poor information feedback loop when all the people see and hear are loud voices. We should always welcome, we should always be welcome to criticize policy, but when that criticism attacks the person rather than policy, it becomes toxic. We will never have an environment where there are no such toxic voices because free speech and people, you know, they choose how they behave. But I lay down the challenge to the rest of us that when we see and hear such toxicity, we look to the better angels of our nature, and we choose not to engage. So I look forward to working with the rest of the council to bring these goals to fruition. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is eight A, reports from city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor Wan and members of the council. Congratulations, Kim Trupiano, to your Councilmember Trupiano status. No report from me this evening. We've got plenty of time for that to come. So thank you.
All right, I will turn to our council members. Councilmember Tillman?
This microphone and me are going to fight. All right. On the 17th, I attended the CBCA meeting at Endeavor Hall. On the 18th, I attended the elected women's luncheon, where we were able to recognize all of the locally elected officials who recently were elected. And we, Kim Trupiano was there, as was Maria Schulman, who is one of our planning commissioners. On the 19th, I attended the CBCA downtown decorations, where I decorated the bocce courts with other members of the community as well as council members. On the 21st, I met with our community development director and discussed a few things here in town that I will be bringing forward on future agenda items. On the 28th, I attended the ad hoc city manager interviews along with Mayor Wan. And am I allowed to say who we chose? Is it a secret? The company? Okay. Where we chose Bob Marine Associates. And they will be conducting the interviews for the new city manager position. On the 30th, I traveled down to Monterey, California to attend the Cal Cities, the League of California Cities Leadership Workshop kickoff meeting. There was a dinner there where we discussed policy that we will be bringing forth in 2023. Our first meeting is in January, and I will share on the December 20th meeting what those policies were. On the 5th, I attended our budget and audit committee meeting with Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Wan. And we discussed our debt policy statement, updates to our investment policy statement. And we also had a couple of the interviews for our community financial sustainability folks. So we'll have two more of those hopefully before the end of the year. And I also met several times with our city manager as well as with Mayor Cloven. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cloven?
Just as a public service announcement, COVID is out there. And it's not fun. I got it for the second time, and it took me out for about a week and a half. So those of you haven't had your vaccinations, if you're inclined to do so, just beware, wash your hands, and wear masks as appropriate. I wish our council members the best, and that's the end of my report.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Thank you, sir. The 17th, I attended the CBA, CBCA meeting over at Endeavor Hall. Then on Saturday, the 19th, we went out and decorated downtown. And I hope everybody really enjoys that and takes them all in. It's a beautiful tribute to the holiday season downtown. During the week of the 28th of November, we had two EBRICS meetings. I'm the representative for the mayor's conference to that. We oversee the radio system that works for both Alameda and Contra Costa County. On our final meeting of, on the, on December 2nd, we ended up saying goodbye to our chair for many years, Sheriff Ahern, who is going out of office. And we elected a new chair, who is one of the police chiefs from Alameda County, I believe. And he will take over starting after the 1st of the year. And then finally, this morning, I met both with the police chief and the city manager. That's my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Trupiano?
Yes, I, and I didn't realize that I needed all the dates. So I think mine is almost similar to Councilmember Tillman's. CBCA meeting in November, the elected women's luncheon in November. I did the CBCA decorations downtown. Three hours of making wreaths was a lot of fun, and our town looks amazing. And I also attended the tree lighting, which wound up at the Clayton Community Church. We did a great job of pivoting to that. I've also met with Reina twice on November 30th and December 6th. Thank you for that. And Jim and I both attended the Karen Mitchoff Retirement Dinner on December 1st. So thank you.
Excellent. I spent a lot of time on the phone this time, so I will leave it at that. But it's been an exciting time. So thank you. With that, I will move to public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone that would like to speak on something not on the agenda, now is your time. Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
Mayor Wan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Excellent. All right, well, I will close item number nine. There are no public hearings, and there are no action items. So that is 10 and 11. Item 12 is council items. Does anyone have anything that they would request for future agenda or future meetings?
They were already on the list of the long list of items that we already have. But just to reiterate, to bring back the one for the updating our policy, our council policy, as well as, and just give a little more flavor, I did discuss with quite a few other cities just their policy on how they actually rotate their mayorship. And I'll just say to anybody who's listening who's a supporter of mine, I don't want to hear anybody having a fit about anything because I'm going to publicly denounce it now. Don't do that. This is exactly how it was designed to happen and how I figured it would go four months ago. So I congratulate you. I do not want anybody harassing any council members ever on my behalf. It's not how I roll, and I don't appreciate that. No horns in front of people's houses. Please don't do that. Did you cut me off? Cut off?
I don't, I don't even have that. There are no buttons.
No, but I did talk to other cities to understand how to take out the emotion from this process. And so I do want to bring that back so that we can discuss it. I think that that will serve our city well in the future. And I think there might have been another one? No, it's all encompassed in that. So that's, if we can bring that back.
All right, thank you. There are, there are two things that I would like to discuss at our next meeting on December 20. And that is, one is the order of our agenda. And I think we can leave it at that, and I'll discuss with staff around that. And the other is, you know, a proposal for a solar lease, a solar lease arrangement as well. And we can talk about the details of that and have it on the agenda next time. So that is it. We do not have any closed sessions, so I will, oh, sorry.
Are we, are we going to talk about committee assignments at the next?
I think we have to, we'll work out the timing. But that's a regular item, so.
Okay.
Okay, so I will close item 12. There is no closed session. Before I adjourn, we are going to roll directly into our Jihad meeting. That is right after this, in which Councilmember Diaz is the chair. So I will adjourn the regular city council meeting, and we will now move directly into our O-Curse Geological Hazard Abatement District meeting. Chair Diaz?
Thank you. And I'm going to call the Board of Directors of the Jihad to order. And I would like the City Clerk to call roll.
Board Member Tillman?
Here.
Board Member Wan?
Here.
Board Member Cloven?
Here.
Vice Chair Wolf? Oh, he's no longer here. Sorry. Sorry, he's on my list. And we'll go Board Member Trupiano and Chair Diaz.
Here.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Here. And now, before I open up the public comment, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. And we certainly appreciate your support. I also want to applaud Janet Calderon, who did that great job in setting up the cookies and coffee and all that. And the cupcakes. And there's plenty left there. You're going to have to eat those.
Everyone who's leaving needs to take a cupcake.
Take some cupcakes with you. All right. Yeah, you're right. Okay, I'm going to now move to item number two, which is the public comment for non-agendated items. Anybody in the audience that wishes to address the board? Seeing none? Anybody online?
Chair Diaz, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Thank you. I'm going to close public comment. And we were going to move now to the consent calendar. Anything going on? That we have the, approved the Board of Directors minutes from the regular meeting of July 19, 2022. So any comments? Anybody would like to move forward on that? How about a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Okay, moved by Member Tillman and second by our Member Cloven. Janet, please call the roll.
Board Member Tillman?
I'm not used to being first, sorry. Yes.
Board Member Wan?
Aye.
Board Member Cloven?
Aye.
Board Member Trupiano?
Aye.
And Chair Diaz.
Yes. Okay, now I'm going to move into the annual reorganization of the Board of Directors. And I'm going to go a little bit different than we had before. I'm going to actually, we're going to conduct the nominations for the chair and election of the chair. And then if there's any comment after that, and then the vice chair. So first of all, I'd like to open it for nominations for Chair of the Jihad.
As a rite of passage, I will nominate Kim to be the Chair of the Jihad.
I will second that.
It's been moved by Member Wan and member, seconded by Member Tillman to nominate and elect Kim Trupiano, our newest member, as Chair of the Jihad. Please call the roll, Janet. Oh, wait a minute, is there any comments? Let me get that out of the way.
And I have none on Zoom. No.
Please call the roll.
Board Member Tillman?
Aye.
Board Member Wan?
Aye.
Board Member Cloven?
Aye.
Somebody else that's no longer on the committee. And how about Chair Trupiano? Or Chair Diaz?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
And now, with grace, I'm going to return the floor to the new Chair of the Jihad, Kim Trupiano.
Okay.
Okay. So is my next move then to pick, ask for nominations for a vice chair? Okay, so I'm going to do that. Are there any nominations for vice chair? Somebody to help me out?
I nominate Member Wan.
Thank you. I, I will say I have already served as chair and vice chair. I looked at the history. So I would, I would nominate Member Clovin as well, because I don't think that he's done that before.
I will serve as vice chair.
That's the second time being vice chair.
Is it?
He was vice chair when I was chair in 2020.
I'm still going to do it.
I'm good with it.
Thank you.
All right. Board Member Tillman?
Which one are we voting on?
Vice, oh yeah, which one?
So you're declining my nomination?
I would respectfully decline and, and counter-nominate Member Clovin.
Then I will second that.
No, public comment first.
I don't see anybody in the audience, and I don't have any hands raised on virtual land, so.
And I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was me needing to ask for public comment. Yeah, sorry. They're like, "Public comment? No public comment?" All right, we close that item. And then...
All right. So Board Member Tillman?
Aye.
Board Member Wan?
Aye.
Board Member Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Chair? No. Vice Chair Tripiano?
Oh, yes.
And Chair Diaz. Okay.
Aye.
Chair Tripiano. This is confusing. I'm sorry, you guys.
I know.
All right.
Okay. So I guess there are no other action items? So do we close that agenda then? No.
Can you see the agenda? So that was item number four, you're closing, 4B, and then you moved to five?
And public hearings? None. No action items? Board items? No. And adjournment? No?
Oh.
Oh, yes to board items?
I have one item for number seven, and I would reiterate the request from our prior
Unless anyone has anything else? That's it? We adjourn the meeting?
We adjourn the meeting.
Okay. I did it. Okay.